I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need everyone who would like to ask Rob, will you please call Rob?
Emily Eball, Sandra Keeler, Tom Wingback, Brian Miller, Lynn Newcomer.
Here.
Thank you.
We have in your packet the minutes from the regular meeting in October and the special meetings held on November 12th and November 13th. Have a chance to review any questions, discussion, if not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn for a few minutes.
So moved.
Tom, second, call Rob.
Sandra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
All right, for public participation, I don't see anyone here from the BEA. So we will write along, Sandra, what kind of careers do you have?
Questions?
Okay.
Just a quick one. The eighth grade tours have started, it's a great way for students to get ready to decide on high school or four county. Our Bryan students have already gone, they went last week. Tonight, tomorrow is parent-teacher conference meetings. Sophomore visitation will be coming up December 7th through 8th. And I was told that December will be lots of testing month. Exactly how the Director of Education said it, Mr. Bachman, lots of testing month. And I want to congratulate Alex Rink in the robotics and technology, he was student of the month. Thank you.
How's Rob, I think we're ready for the treasurer's report.
Okay, thank you. This evening we have with us Patrick King from Stiefel, out of Columbus. Patrick has helped us with our bonds financing over the years and due to the markets, we're looking at refinancing a portion of our bonds again at this time, so Patrick has a lot of driving yet to do tonight. So we're going to turn the meeting over to Patrick for him to make the presentation to the board regarding refinancing.
So as, well, thank you, it's good to be back in town.
Good to have you.
Nice to see all of you that I saw last week at the conference. And as Rob said, there is an opportunity for the district to refinance a portion of their 2014 A-bond. I'm sorry, I passed around two pages.
Yep, two separate.
Yeah, sorry.
If there's any extras, Tom, I'll take them.
The landscape page has some details on the refunding opportunity. And I have more in.
Okay, perfect, if you want to hand them, I'll talk, or I'll hand out while you talk.
This page outlines the opportunity and shows that the district's bonds that are outstanding have an interest rate of 4.47 percent and the new bonds would have an interest rate of 3.43 percent. That little more than 1 percent reduction in savings would result in a $650,000 reduction in debt service. So, an opportunity that makes some sense for the district to pursue. And in addition to the usual market forces and compelling savings numbers, there is another reason why we are moving quickly on this and that is because this tax bill that is all over the news and newspapers stirring a lot of conversation nationally, has a provision in it that would outlaw or basically sunset this advance refunding concept that the district would be taking advantage of by pursuing the savings opportunity. This is the same type of transaction that the district did almost 12 months ago exactly. I'd say, I think a little more than $1 million, over $1 million dollars in doing that. So, what we're trying to accomplish is getting in a refinancing and a savings ahead of a December 31 date where these transactions will go away. So, if you look at the second page, which has the schedule, it is a pretty tight timetable.
I was just looking at.
Yeah. Normally, we'd like to have maybe eight to 10 weeks to do this, in this case, we have about six. I know Rob was looking for things to do over the holidays. Always. Looking to fill up his work schedule. In all seriousness, this is fairly abbreviated. The good news is, a lot of the work in terms of the official statement and heavy lifting was done only 12 months ago, so it's an easy update. We do have to have a call with communities, which has been scheduled for December 1st. Given the newness, the fact that we did this a year ago, we don't expect any.
They'll take a look at what our financial information was presented then, just do an update from that time forward.
Probably a half an hour or so call and just to bring up to speed on our.
So, the last time this was done, was there any change in our rating?
No, we don't anticipate any.
Well, Rob, will you participate in that call with communities?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, Rob, absolutely, yeah. And bond council, Ed Kavazan will also be on the call as well, so. Expect this to go pretty seamlessly. I will say that Bryan is not the only issuer that will be entering the market. We do expect there to be a lot of transactions, so we want to get this in and get it out. A lot of folks who have started on the same timetable are pricing bonds the week of the 20th. We're trying to get it in the week of the 13th.
Just to beat that one.
To beat the rush and take advantage of the lock-in interest rate. So, kind of an interesting nuance to the transaction we did last year that I think we're bringing to the board to have you understand all the different factors that exist in this particular transaction.
I just have a question again about the amount that we're allowed to refinance. Can you explain how that amount is determined because it's not the entire.
That's a great point that I glossed over. So, there's an opportunity in the tax law to sell what are called bank-qualified securities. Those are bond issues that are under 10 million in any calendar year. Basically, get a lower interest rate than issues that are above 10 million. So, we are peeling off a $10 million piece of the 15 or so million that is able to be refinanced or has already been refinanced from the original issue to maximize savings from that piece. So, good question.
What's our fees?
Fees are undetermined, I think that typically they are about 1.5 percent of the total transaction and all savings numbers, so that $650,000 number is net. Yes, so if you could do this for free, it'd be $800,000 or something, say about.
And over what period of time?
Good question. I believe it's till 2042, so about $20,000 a year. I think that, given the status of the tax bill, which is a developing situation, there's some thought that this might not get passed and we're going to monitor that situation as we go and manage it. So, one thing I will say is that the elimination of advanced refundings is in both the House and the Senate bill, so there is some thought that this will make it through all other things in the House.
Do we have any questions from pantry?
One other note, the resolution authorizes an amount greater than what we have put on this sheet. I think the resolution has 9.5 million, we're looking at 8.4 million. We just added a little bit for flexibility sake, should the market change, should the opportunity change, just to give the district flexibility. We don't expect it, we need it, but in the event that things change, it's good to have that.
So, it's not, that wouldn't add any debt, it's just refinancing a bigger portion.
Yes, exactly.
And we're not adding debt.
Exactly.
If we can add that into the refunding fees, we'll be able to do that.
We do a little bit more and save more money, but the best opportunity, as we've identified, is this 8.425 million piece.
And for all intents and purposes, interest rates for that matter, I don't know what the bond market has done, but in general, the prediction is continued interest rate increases, no, interest rate decreases in the future.
Well, so what's interesting about these transactions is that they're really, we're looking at long-term interest rates because it has a 2042 maturity and short-term interest rates because of the fact that you put the proceeds of this in an escrow account and have that sit there until the call date in four or so years. So, as short-term rates go up, as they are predicted to do, and long-term rates continue to stay in the approximate range where they are, these transactions get more efficient, so that's why this has kind of popped up recently.
I appreciate you helping us and continuing to manage our financing. This is a good piece and if we can realize savings to the tax paying public, we certainly will do that.
Well, we appreciate the opportunity and the grace to get this done.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Patrick.
And Rob will cover the actual resolution.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And then we can continue on with the financial report to review the financials. Then at October 31, our cash rate acceleration report, Farmers and Merchant State Bank, the balance is $6,539,144. Adjustments and outstanding checks at $37,664. Deposits at Star Ohio, $3,274,590. At Morgan Stanley, investments of $6,81,102. At State Bank, $6,173,824. Petty cash and change funds total $7,400. Total funds on hand at the end of October, $22,039,800. Of those funds, our general fund balance was $14,291,000. Bond retirement fund, $1,511,000. Permanent improvement fund, $2,454,000. Of our construction funds, our LFI funds, we have a remaining balance of $247,000. Our local share of the construction funds, $1,941,000. And the state share, $627,000. Let's see, the total funds on hand, $22,039,800. Our SN2 report, so far this year, our revenues are about $150,000. They had a budget and our expenses are about $172,000. Under budget, so a positive variance of about $323,000. Any questions on those reports? If not, we'll move on to appropriations. Our number appropriation total is $27,328,450. Changes during the month, we had a reduction in appropriations of about $10,244. Next item, resolution to refinance the bonds for this previous conversation here with Patrick. We have a resolution to reenact our accumulated lease plan with Boya. This is a tax deferred plan that was previously in effect, but Boya had closed the account due to inactivity. We want to make sure that that account and that program is running. And also, we ask for your approval of the three-year lease renewal with Brown City Christian School. This will be for the period September 1, 2018, through August 31, 2021. Donations, I'd like to mention several donations this month. We had a donation of $1,825 from the class of 1967. The purchase of a podium, buddy bench and tree at the new 6 to 12 building. Bryan Elementary PTO donated $1,000 for BIS supplies. The Bryan Academic Boosters donated $300 to our Bryan Elementary School for STEM buckets. The Bryan Elementary PTO donated $2,515.63 to the elementary for mascot and STEM literacy packs. Youth basketball organization donated $4,239 to our athletic department. Vernon Nagle Incorporated from Napoleon made a donation to our athletic department of $2,500. The Bryan Youth Basketball made another donation to our athletic department in the amount of $1,063. And George Azar and Mary A. Isaac Fund through the Bryan Area Foundation made a donation of $3,085 to the district. And the Isaac family asked that that money be put into our student assistance fund. So, it's a very generous donation that we receive every year from the foundation through the Isaac Fund. Any questions?
Thank you. There's no discussion, no questions. I will entertain a motion to approve all of the treasurer's recommendations to include financial statements as presented, amended appropriations, the resolution to refinance the bonds for the exhibit, approval of the resolution for the 403B plan, approval of the lease, and all the donations as listed.
I'm going to accept the recommendations.
Thank you, second please.
Second.
Ryan, please call Rob.
Tom?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
We're reaching the home stretch in the construction update. Um, and or Glenn or Diana, Rob, I mean, updates on the construction project and where it stands. Punchles.
I'll speak for the punchles at the elementary, it's still going very well. Items are being addressed as they come up. Again, a reminder to both the board and to the community that we have a one-year warranty on the buildings, so anything that is happening or is in need of fixing is being done under that warranty. And again, until we get through a whole year and until we've pushed every button and opened every drawer and checked every circuit, we're going to find a few things here and there. So, we're very pleased with that progress. And the asbestos removal at the Portland campus has begun and that process will take us through the winter and then that demolition again will happen this spring. So, as you said, we're getting very near the finish line, but those are our updates unless Tom or Glenn have anything you'd like to add.
Yeah, I have one thing, and talking with Ned, he brought this issue up and it, I don't know that it's an issue, but it's just a process. And it has to do with the balancing of the heating system in the buildings. It's basically, for all practical purposes, it's a brand-new building. It's the first time the heating system is being put into, you know, operation. There is a process that you go through and it takes almost an entire season to get it done and get it done right. So, as you hear people maybe complaining about the one room being too hot and another room being too cold, it's just part of the process. They just, it takes time and it's just something that they have to work on a continuing basis to find two and there's no other way to get around it.
And it almost takes not just a season, a whole Ohio.
Yeah, you've got to experience it all, you've got to experience the heat, you've got to experience the cold.
The wet. The wet, the humid, all that. Thanks for that clarification. Any other questions regarding construction? Next under new business, I shared with you an exhibit. This is just a discussion item at this point because Ohio ODE recommends that we discuss our school calendar and we wait a month before we finally approve our school calendar so that we can host a public hearing. So, in December, we will host a public hearing on the calendar prior to voting on it. But I wanted to share with you, so far in the process, first I met with administrators, the both unions, representatives from both unions, and asked them for input into what they would like to see in a school calendar. And based on that input, created three different versions of a school calendar, which then I shared with the entire staff and allowed them to have additional input. And this calendar received over 70 percent of the approval. So, this is the calendar that I am bringing to the board for your consideration. In the past two years with construction, we've had a later start that has proven to cause some disruption in the terms of other county schools that we serve along with four county, which is probably our biggest issue. Starting three to four weeks later than four county has been a real problem. We've had some students changing their educational plans because they wanted to wait and start later only to have some regrets of that once they got into the school year. So, one of the highest priorities was making sure that we were kind of in line with what other county schools are doing. And most other county schools are recommending starts the week of August 6th or the week of August 13th. Also, because of.
It's really early.
That's a big swing.
Well, people are going to feel a really short summer, so it's good to talk about it now. And we've talked about that throughout the process. And so, because of that, we went with the later week. So, teachers would return to work August 13th and have two workdays and students would return on August 15th. Fair day and Labor Day would be the two days off in September. Teachers also requested that we move the, or move one of the workdays that was held in August back later in the fall. So, we did that and that would be on October 8th. Student-wise, we talked about productivity in short weeks and it was a consensus that there was very little productivity when there's a real short educational week. So, you have a week at Thanksgiving, then you have two weeks at the Christmas, New Year holiday season. The fourth, or, I'm sorry, the third teacher workday is in January. You have a workday for all staff in February along with President's Day. You have a week of spring break, which was a popular consensus among most. Easter falls really late in 2019, so that April 19th is Good Friday. And then students would finish on, all students would finish on May 24th. Seniors would finish three days earlier. Graduation would be held on May 26th, Memorial Day on May 27th, and the final teacher workday on May 28th. Again, we have contingency days built in. If we were to have a severe winter, we would have starting on February 15th and then also have that week after Memorial Day as our other four contingency dates. So, again, this is open for discussion and open for questions that I would be glad to answer.
What's our, and I was trying to look this up, what's our official last day of this year? This school year?
June?
June 8th.
June 8th?
Okay.
Thank you.
And I'm assuming, and this is a minor, real, real minor thing, but end of second quarter.
Yeah, I just thought of it as I was reading.
Because I'm not sure when December 200.
I was just reading that.
Probably the 21st, I'm guessing, because that's a Friday.
We'll get that fixed, yep.
That's a little.
Any questions or discussion? It's a very different calendar, so I'm sure there'll be people wearing it.
It's more in line with what we had prior to construction. If you go back to our calendar three years ago, you would see that this was very similar to where we were pre-construction.
Are more and more districts going to that early start? You said some of them are starting the week of the 6th?
Mm-hmm, yes. Yes, the thought process being as more and more testing requirements are added in, we need the most time to educate students that we can.
That's what's driving it?
Under administrative recommendations, we have approval of high school diploma for Dennis McClary. Unfortunately, Dennis could not be with us tonight, but he has met all requirements for both Bryan Street Schools and the state of Ohio, so we congratulate him and his diploma date will be today. We have two MOUs, both of them are the same topic. We had needed some clarification in our contract that we most recently negotiated when it came to insurance enrollment. We needed to clarify, it said that the payment for the high deductible health savings plan would be paid by beginning January 1st. And we didn't have a payroll that week, so we had to clarify that it would be the first payroll in January. Excuse me. And we also had to clarify who qualified for that first enrollment time of a high deductible. So, any employee who, for the first time in 2018, would be signing up for a high deductible would be eligible for those payments. So, that is with both unions, both agree to that and have already approved it within their associations. Next, you have approval of a mutual aid agreement for temporary shelter with Genesis Healthcare. So, our attorney has reviewed this agreement. Genesis would just ask that if in any case of emergency that they would need to evacuate their facility, that they would be able to bring their residents to our elementary and then take them out within the first 24 hours. They really don't expect it to be a long-term solution. Will be a temporary holding place until they could transfer their residents to other locations. And again, the attorney has reviewed that agreement and has signed off on that. And then finally, the attorney has also reviewed this agreement for us. The YMCA, we are developing a mutual community partnership. We utilize their swimming facility for our high school swim team and we just wanted to get that in writing because it was a verbal agreement and we wanted to make sure that all parties were protected and that this was written down. And we will be paying a fee for the percent of time that we utilize the YMCA pool and in return, we will be bringing another agreement next month. They are requesting use of our transportation for their high school students and their childcare situation and that will be coming for your approval next month. And they will be paying the cost of that transportation, so. Questions regarding any of those agreements or MOUs?
If we're going to pay for, if they're going to pay for transportation, do we have sufficient drivers to cover that right now?
Well, as of today, no. But they understand that.
We're going to vote on that.
They understand that and it's pending upon us getting a driver availability. And they understand that that's where we are.
Any other questions? If not, then I will entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's administrative recommendations. Will someone, Sandra, a second please?
Second.
Mr. Ross, room, please call Rob.
Brian?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes. Again, I apologize for my voice tonight. Under commendations, we have finished our first quarter of the 1718 school year. We would like to congratulate our all-A honor roll at grades six, seven and eight, as well as nine through 12, as well as our four county honor roll students are listed. As Mrs. Keeler mentioned earlier, Alex Rink was our four county student of the month. We'd like to congratulate our Hugh O'Brien Youth Ambassadors, Erica Bynes and Connor Arthur. And also recognize our Students of Action for this month's self-control character trait. We have our NW Oyal Fall Scholar Athletes, which is a fairly lengthy list. We have our Fall Athletic Award winners listed for you. Both district honors, league honors, state honors. We'd like to recognize, excuse me, Audrey Zimmerman, who competed at the state cross-country meet and set a state, or set our school cross-country record this year. And Mr. Ruffer couldn't join us tonight, so I'm sure that he would like me to share that Audrey is our first female cross-country state participant in school history.
That's exciting, congratulations.
And then for Bryan.
His brothers did it while being a dual sports athlete.
Yes, as well as being a dual sports athlete. Bryan Elementary, we'd like to recognize our students for their character trait commendation of self-control and they honored those students with assemblies this month, as well as our PE gold slip winners, Gabby Malanga, Braylon Brackenberry and Ethan Longoria. Those are my commendations for this month. Those are my commendations for this month.
Right move to celebrate? I would entertain a motion to approve the recommendations, commendations. Glenn, you second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Tom. Please call the roll.
Glenn, yeah, family?
Yes.
Cinder?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Under personnel recommendations, I sadly have to announce that the bus driver cafeteria we hired last month has resigned because he has been offered a position within his career field. And so we wish him the best. We are thankful for the service that he was able to give us. And that went into effect November 17th. So going back for a minute to where we stand with the blessing, we have one driver that is ready to drive and is fully licensed. However, we are just waiting on, on the ACI FBI check to come back. We've been calling each week and they just keep telling us it's in process. So as soon as we get that clear check, we will have a driver ready to go. With a second driver who is finishing up her training hours and will be headed down to test in Toledo. We have a third driver who is working on completing her training hours and we continue to still be recruiting. So again, if anyone is still interested in driving bus, we would love to speak with you. But going back to, we were able to reinstitute one of our shuttle routes, um, to the area at the Bus Farm. And we're hopeful that once we get the FBI, BCI check, we'll be able to start the live transportation as well as the final shuttle route that we need to-
And driver will be able to do both of those?
Yeah, and then we'll cross our fingers that we have no further resignations or change. I would also recommend, uh, Mary Myers as a one-on-one aide, four days a week, four hours per day, zero years experience. And that's in our preschool effective October 26th. And also in our preschool, Carrie Lalonde, um, four hours per day, four days a week, zero years of experience effective October 31st. And those were two additions due to two new students enrolling that needed additional adult assistance. Transfer of classified personnel, Teresa Keller to a one-on-one aide, 6.5 hours per day effective October 16th. And Lauren Ruelas, preschool classroom aide, 2.5 hours on Monday, 4.75 hours Tuesday through Friday, effective November 6th. And those were the result of, we were trying out, we had a new student placement and we were trying out a one-on-one aide and it, it is working. And it will save the student from being placed in an alternative setting. And so Lauren's transfer is to replace Teresa's transfer of that position. We'd like to non-renew, recommend non-renewing the fall supplemental of non-certificated staff at the end of their contract duty this fall. Again, as a reminder, this is an annual action, it is not a reflection of their coaching performance. But because they are outside of the system, we non-renew them each year. We add teacher substitute and classified substitute to our sub-list. And those are my personnel recommendations for this month.
Okay, any questions? If not, motion to approve?
The rule.
Tom, second please?
Second.
Glenn? Please call the roll.
Emily?
Yes.
Cinder?
Yes.
Yes.
Brian? Do you have plan?
Yes.
Next, we have, um, second reading and approval request of the following board policy items that are listed in your agenda. As a reminder, we use our Neola company outside to review the state federal laws to make sure we are in compliance and to make recommended changes. If you have any questions regarding those policies, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions, please? Second, or motion please to approve the second reading and approval of those board policy changes?
So who?
Thanks, Tom, second please?
I'll second.
Thanks, Cinder. Please call the roll.
Cinder?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
It's going around, isn't it?
Later?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
I'm gonna put yes out fast enough.
Knew it was coming. I was just anticipating.
Just correct by ya.
All right, under points of information, this is sad.
Yes, so, um, one thing I'd like to bring up under the legislative finance update, and again, I have one more handout for you. I hope that I made enough copies, if not, we can share and share alike. Senate Bill 216 is right now a real topic of conversation going around the state of Ohio. And within Senate Bill 216, which they've, they've dubbed the deregulation bill, there are a number of items that we have been discussing as a board. And overall, the general theme is there are mandates that are often put out that are specifically written to deal with an issue that is going on somewhere in the state of Ohio, but it is certainly not impacting Bryan City Schools. And yet Bryan City Schools is held to those mandates. And it adds burden, it adds time, it adds costs, it adds frustration. And again, as a board, we've discussed this many times, whether it be in testing or teacher evaluations or safety requirements, college credit plus, preschool standards. So I had the amazing opportunity to go down and testify, um, in front of the Senate Education Committee on behalf and in support of this bill. Uh, and it was an amazing experience and I want to thank Chad Bassett because he helped me prepare and do some of the research for me and the impacts that we would see. And I just wanted to share with the board, you know, we focused on just teacher licensure. Because it is so difficult. We've talked in the past year about how it's difficult to find subs, whether it be for teacher subs or classified subs. And the licensures that we have to jump through to get them to be able to be in the classroom helping students. And we also talked about finding quality people to work with our students in this district and how the licensure, again, is a roadblock standing in their way. We talked about the third grade reading guarantee and how, you know, our third grade reading guarantee, we've experienced a very high amount of success on that test. And yet we have to have our teachers be specifically certified, which means sending them back to school, which means paying their tuition, which is a cost we don't need, we're not seeing a benefit from that additional, um, licensure for them. And then we talked about testing and we talked about supporting the elimination of some of the testing. We talked about how the test companies don't release the data, they don't let us see the test questions. They don't let us see the, um, analysis and it's difficult to try to continue to keep up when it keeps changing. So again, I want to thank Chad and if you'd like to add anything at this point, um, in regards to the bill.
One of the things I'm looking at is kind of what's old is new again, K to 8 certification.
Yes.
Isn't that fascinating?
Yes.
It's coming back.
You know, that worked for how many years and then they tried this really horrible experiment that made it really difficult to, to hire qualified teachers, especially at the middle school, because they certified in particular areas, so.
Right.
I find that, that's one of the things I find particularly impactful.
So I would ask the board to consider, and I know that we typically don't get in this realm, but there is a resolution available, um, in support. It would say, whereas, um, it would be a, a support of Senate Bill 216 that we could then share with our state senators. It says, um, whereas the increasing burden of state mandated regulations on Ohio public schools has reached a critical point. Whereas many of these regulations waste valuable time and money that should be spent on teaching and learning. Whereas we desire to work in collaboration with our appointed and elected officials to address the accumulation of problems being generated by these regulations. Whereas Senate Bill 216 has been introduced to address some of these problems by eliminating barriers to employing high-quality teachers, eliminating the unnecessary duplications of tests used to assess student learning, providing a more accurate method paper test of assessing a third grade student ability to read and write versus their technical ability on the high stakes third grade reading test. Requiring the National Testing Service to provide meaningful information to teachers to use to help children learn and grow. Restoring the rights of parents to have some control over their children's attendance. Restoring the ability of school boards to enforce educational policy that meets local community needs. Consolidating and streamlining state reporting requirements to reduce time expended on unproductive paperwork. And providing relief from other mandates that have accumulated over time. Be it resolved that this Board of Education, being duly elected and acting as representatives, support Senate Bill 216 as a start to increasing efficiency and effectiveness in the state system of education. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution will be sent to all members of the Ohio Senate Education Committee. I just ask for your consideration in support of that. You may want some time to think about that, but I just wanted to fill you in on what's happening.
I have some questions. I really like a lot of what we've seen, is a lot of what we've complained about, you're right, and what we've had issues with because of all the reasons you cited, that it adds time, expense, and burden to our, to our district, to our parents, to our students, to our teachers, to our administration, obviously. Things like the truancy, um, that you shouldn't count excused absences towards truancy. If it's excused, how can it be truant? Silly thing to do. I do have some questions. Um, do you know who the author or sponsor of the bill is?
Senator Huffman.
And he's out of where, do you know?
Lima.
Lima?
Thank you, okay. So he's a Northwest Ohio guy. And do you know who wrote the resolution?
Uh, this was provided by BASSA, which is the state superintendent organization.
By their attorneys and review of them. Do you know who around us might be, um, willing to sign on or who has already passed this resolution or? Have you had discussions like in your Williams County group?
We had discussions in our four county superintendent group, but I am not certain yet with the November board meetings being either late last week or early this week. I'm not certain of who has passed it yet.
Is there a timeline by which if somebody's going to join in on this, they have to have her done by, uh?
I don't know that there's a specific timeline. I know that it's, it's on a faster track than some bills, they're really trying to get this moved through.
Questions or comments, observations?
So you, I mean, obviously you went down and were part of this, yourself, Chad, whomever else, Mark, I'm not sure who, if you've seen this or looked through any of this stuff. I mean, you guys are fully part of this, Rob?
Yeah, this is, it's-
Step in the right direction.
It's a step in the right direction. I was just gonna say, my actual testimony, my actual testimony was, it's not perfect, but it's a good start.
I guess that would, that would be my feeling, is that, you know, you redo it and it's, it becomes a wish list in a sense. You're never gonna get it all, but it does touch on many, many of the topics that we've had discussions on numerous occasions about. You know, I, we can give it some consideration and act on it next month, I would think that would be something that could-
Are there items in here that you disagree with?
Not really, I mean, I think, as I said again, um, to the committee, the actual bill as written is hundreds of pages long.
Sure.
My worry is what unintended consequences are in that bill that we're just not seeing yet.
Well, the infamous words of a famous politician, you have to pass the bill to see what's in it.
That's, that's my concern.
Is Bassa doing some further research on the bill as the process is moving along to find out, to see if there-
BASSA is in full support of the bill. BASSA always is monitoring what's going on in the legislation and, and-
So if they, and a review of the additional information in the bill finds something that's objectionable, they would certainly obviously let you know. Are you guys prepared to do anything? Go ahead.
That's what I was gonna ask, timeline, is next month okay?
I-
Or are we looking for something?
I think it should be fine. I, we really were not given a specific timeline. I don't know, Chad, if you're aware.
Just how you wheels of government.
Yeah, yeah, I, I am really not aware of a specific timeline.
Opportunity to get feedback from other superintendents from what they're doing from the board.
Legislation, legislature isn't even in session right now, are they? They're, they're home.
Again, I did not check.
I don't think any, I don't think, I don't think it's gonna happen before the first of the year.
Well, so please keep us updated if there's any additional information that comes out. And thank you for taking the time and the energy, both Mr. Bassett for the preparation, you for the attendance to, to air our concerns with, uh, the Senate, which we've asked you to do, make sure that they know that how frustrating it is and how expensive it is for local districts who are doing very well, to have these additional burdens that don't add value. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. Um, board meeting dates coming up, we have our next board meeting December 18th here at 7:00 PM. We have our Business Advisory Committee scheduled for February 15th at 7:00 AM here in the conference room. And our LPDC Master Teacher Committee meeting will be determined. Um, as I said earlier, Mr. Ruffer had a athletic, winter athletic meeting tonight, so he was unable to attend. And, um, Mrs. Cox had a basketball scrimmage for her son. And I have her report, but we're gonna let Mr. Bassett kick us off here.
Good evening, just a couple of quick items. Talked about last month, gifted testing, going to test second and sixth grade, now we completed that, um, for the first time online last week. Very easy, very successful as far as navigating it. Second grade, the teachers walked them through step by step, so it's not going to turn second grade loose on the computer. Again, we did it online for second graders, one is the significance of cost savings to our district. And two, we felt like if we're going, if this bill doesn't pass, we have to test third graders online. Let's prepare for this, this practice with a teacher walking them step by step through it. Feedback from the teachers was it was, it was pretty simple and almost went too slow for them.
But the gifted testing, did you test all students or a select amount?
No, we test all students, uh-huh. Even if a kid is on IEP, they can be, um, twice.
Get in some areas, yeah?
Yep, yep. Twice exceptional, they call it. So yeah, we test every student for that. Also, uh, curriculum wise, we're working through the elementary grades right now. We had a fall cancellation, so I missed a grade, we'll make them up. Working at our STAR data, again, our STAR is just a product that we look at, the measures of reading and math growth from the beginning of the school year to the end. Look at our first two months of data to establish our baseline, that kind of looks at our kids of where their weaken, weaknesses are, especially standards. It's looking at math, are they weak in fractions, what are we gonna do about this group of kids that are weak in fractions? And we'll monitor that throughout the course of the year. And we'll go back and look at it in February and say, okay, our kids are weak in fraction, where are they at now? So just a good way that we monitor our progress of our students. And on a good note, um, tomorrow menu change in the cafeteria, but we're gonna have Thanksgiving dinner for what the state will allow us to have. By our guidelines.
Math potatoes and gravy, that's what I don't know.
We're gonna have mashed potatoes and turkey gravy, um, corns, peaches, and a dinner roll. We can't have the stuffing or the pumpkin pie, but, uh, be as close as we can to it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rary, we'll let you go next.
All right, good evening. We, uh, completed our first day of quick donations for the Christmas for Kids class. We partnered today with Mix 98.1 and on day one, our building was able to donate from our student and staff body $666. So we're doing that again tomorrow, we're about to have a, another great turnout, so the kids are having fun with that. Uh, we have our annual college and career day coming up, so when we get back from Thanksgiving break, it's actually on Thursday, December 7th. So we have a variety of activities scheduled for our freshmen through seniors. Um, anywhere from JA a day to business tours to practice ACT, to Northwest State, community college visits, um, and then four county visits as well. So we're really trying to get our students exposed to the opportunities available to them. Uh, the business tours, there's a huge manufacturing push, um, within the county right now and, and region for that matter. So we're gonna go to Ally, Volid, and True Fast in Ohio Arts and show them some of the options and availabilities to them there so they get a little, uh, unique experience right here in Bryan. So we're looking forward to that. Uh, and then just a couple calendar days related to the upcoming holidays. We have our December 17th Annual Holiday Concert, that's Sunday at 2:00, and the Arts and Ed. And then that following day is the Orchestra Spaghetti Dinner, so come out and have some dinner with the program, that's the 18th at 5:00. And that's gonna be in our Commons, the 612 building. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just add one, um, bit of information, my granddaughter and I attended the Alice Motor Lane production and, and as we're leaving, I said, "That was good, wasn't it?" And she said, "That wasn't good, that was amazing."
It was fantastic.
The kids did a great job, the, the staff who prepared it, so, and musicians, it was great, it was great.
I do have Karen's elementary report. Last week, they did a canned food drive for their bear bag program and they had over 2,000 canned goods brought in. So congratulations to Mrs. Corte and Mrs. Scribner's classrooms who won a popcorn party for bringing in the most items. And they greatly appreciate all the community support of our bear bags program, which, um, sends food home- which sends food home over the weekend for families in need. So that's what our bear bags do, does. As Mr. Bassett shared, the grade two testing, JA week for first grade is the week of November twenty-seventh, when we get back from our Thanksgiving holiday. And they will also be supporting Christmas for Kids, and they will be doing their drive the week of November twenty-seventh to December first. And then finally, December fourth through eighth, we're taking on a new challenge. It's been designated across the state as Computer Science Education Week. And at Bryan Elementary, many schools around the world, and we will be joining, will be participating in an hour of code. So grades, students in grades K through five will participate in a forty to sixty-minute lesson put together by our staff and Bible and Jamie Morris, and they will be learning code language. And we are very excited to be offering that to our entire elementary students.
It's cool. All right, are there any other, is there any other business? Jorro, any for a second session? I'm not aware of any. I would take just a moment to thank Deborah Upton, Mike Stockton, and Scott Benedict, our newly elected board members for attending tonight. And certainly, if you have any questions, feel free to contact any board member. Mr. Rossrum, or Mrs. Savage, for a moment, so. Thank you and welcome. That being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Right? Second. Thank you, Tom. Hello, Calbro?
Tom?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.